Welcome to the myparistexas.com North Lamar School Board Meet the Candidates Forum. Brought to you by Ballard Insurance Agency, Dillon's Drivers, Dolan's Bail Bonds and Buck Dandy Trailers. I'm your moderator Chad Lindsey, North Lamar Class of 2000. A quick reminder for voters, early voting started today and will be open until Tuesday, May 1st. Those in the North Lamar School District can vote at the North Lamar Administration Building from 7:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Polls will be closed Saturday and Sunday, April 28th and 29th. Election Day voting is at the Lamar County Services Building at 231 Lamar Avenue or the Powderly Volunteer Fire Department on Saturday, May 5th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Once again, we do want to thank our sponsors Ballard Insurance Agency, Dillon's Drivers, Dolan's Bail Bonds and Buck Dandy Trailers. Joining us tonight at the First Street Studios are three current board members Jeff Martin, Ricky Richardson and Christie Trammell. Also joining us are four gentlemen running for a seat on the board Brian Rainey, Randy Stevens, Beau Exum and Judd Bivins. Welcome everyone. We're going to get straight into things tonight. Each candidate will be allowed 60 seconds to answer each question as well as a one-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. When time is up, you'll hear this bell. That's when we ask that you finish your thought and go ahead and wrap up your statements. Now it's time to meet your candidates. Here's how this is going to work with the opening statements. We're going to start here on my left and we'll go in order from my left to my right. Now each subsequent question will go one down so we'll come right back around. So it'll lead my left to my right each time around but we'll have a different person will go first each time. So we'll start right over here.
Hello, my name is Beau Exum. I was born and raised in Powderly, Texas. Went to Aaron Parker and graduated to North Lamar in 89. I'm married to Liz Exum. I have four kids enrolled at North Lamar. I own Exum Plumbing that has been in the family for three generations. I've been in construction my whole life. Thank you.
My name's Randy Stevens. I've lived here in Paris all my life. I graduated from Paris Schools. When I was thinking about my opening statement, I was this morning in my quiet time, I was thinking about how blessed I am to live in a county, a city and a state and the United States where democracy rules and we're even able to have this debate and even be able to vote. Thank you.
My name is Judd Bivins. I'm born and raised here in Paris. Been here 47 years. I'm a North Lamar graduate. Graduated in 1989. I work in construction. Worked for RK Hall Construction. Been there 23-plus years. My wife is Shelley Bivins. She is a teacher at North Lamar. She's been there 15-plus years and given the opportunity, I look forward to serving on the North Lamar Board. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Brian Rainey. I'm a lifetime resident of Lamar County. I have three children, a son Austin that graduated from North Lamar last year, a daughter in the ninth grade at North Lamar and a daughter in the eighth grade. My wife is in her 10th year of teaching at North Lamar. She's at Everett Elementary and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ricky Richardson. I've owned and operated my business here in Paris, Texas. This year will be 22 years. I was appointed to the board 10 and a half months ago at a time when there was a lot of chaos, full board meetings, people everywhere, people upset. And in the last 10 and a half months, I think things have calmed down and we're going in a positive direction. I would like to continue that and I ask for your vote. My name's Ricky Richardson.
Hello, my name's Jeff Martin. I'm married to Brittany Martin who's an accountant here in Paris. We have two daughters, Mackenzie who's in eighth grade at Stone Middle School and Molly's who's in fourth grade at Bailey Intermediate. I went to school at North Lamar, graduated in 1989. I love North Lamar. My blood runs blue and gold. North Lamar is where I went to school. It's where I wanted my kids to go to school because of the rich traditions, reputation of having the best teachers, excellent academics and excellent kids. I've served on the board during trying times where we've lost over 300 kids, around 100 teachers and lost the trust of our staff, our community, our parents and our kids. Starting with changes made in last spring's election, the current board has made tough decisions, made tough changes. North Lamar is once again heading in a positive direction. Thank you.
First, I want to say thank you to myparistexas.com for hosting this informative discussion. For those who don't know me, I'm Christie Trammell and I'm excited to be running for reelection to the North Lamar School Board. The reason is simple. Public education is ultimately tied to the vitality of our community. Investing in our children now means a vibrant future for North Lamar and the city of Paris. As a member of this community and with two daughters who attend North Lamar, I like you, education is certainly a priority for me. I care a great deal about what goes on in the district from a perspective of not only a parent but a taxpayer. I have a vested interest in wanting to have the best programs, best teachers and staff and the best schools in place for our students. Thank you.
All right, thank you candidates. For this next question, as I said earlier, we'll start with Mr. Stevens, work our way back around to Mr. Exum. And of course, we've started with the most difficult one to get it out of the way. What do you believe makes you qualified to serve on the North Lamar School Board?
Thank you for giving me the hardest question right up front.
Very welcome sir.
I believe that there are times to take care of business dealings in the school system. It is required. However, business experience alone does not qualify someone for this position. I am a Lamar County business owner for nearly two decades, but more importantly, I have a strong desire to see that education and love for learning are fostered in every student at North Lamar. I have personally mentored young men in leadership and responsibility as well spiritually. I have served on numerous local committees and been involved in every program possible with my active children and other students, staff and also staff at North Lamar. I support Dr. Adams and his role as a leader of our school as well as our administrator and staff members. I'm willing, always willing to learn and grow. I look forward to the state-required training for school board members so I can be a great asset to our district. Recently, a local leader with much integrity gave me his best advice. He said to always do the right thing with honesty and intentions even when it's hard and not popular. That is what I plan to do.
I believe the number one qualification that anyone has to have to serve on the school board is just that, the willingness and the ability to serve, the desire to serve. I have that. I have a desire to serve and to give back to my community, to give back to something that's bigger than me, to be a part of something that's bigger than me. If you do what's right, if you make all the decisions and based on the facts and the information, if you seek that information and those facts, you compile that information and you take it to prayer and you get an answer and then you come back with that answer to the board and you take that opportunity and serve and give back services is what it's all about. And I have that desire and that qualification. Thank you.
Qualifications of a board member, I believe are simple. Taxpayer for one, the willingness to agree to disagree with other board members, be open to community involvement. I come from a family of educators. Both my parents have over 35 years each in education. My wife's an educator. I've seen the struggles, the goods, the bads, the ugly that comes with it. You know, I think I'm qualified because I'm willing to let teachers and administrators do their job, not micromanage what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. You know, it's got to be about kids. Over the last 10 years, just working with youth sports and kids and seeing the needs of these districts in our area and wanting North Lamar to be better than the rest, it's just something that goes deep to my heart and I believe I'm qualified for the job. Thank you.
What I believe makes me qualified for the job is experience. Previously, I was elected and honored to serve on the school board at Paris ISD. I learned many things about the workings of a school board by serving with several board members with dozens of years of school board experience. Also, school board members are required by law to obtain continuing education hours to learn how to be a successful school board member. In years past, the law said all board members were required to obtain six hours continuing education their first year and three hours each year thereafter. My first year, I obtained 21 hours, 18 to 20 hours each year thereafter. Only being on the school board for 10 and a half months this year at North Lamar, I've already obtained 23 hours. If elected, you can expect me to continue to work hard, do my homework and make honest, informed, honest decisions for our district.
I have over 26 years of business experience. I've operated, our family-owned RV dealership, Camper Dan's RV Sales since 1992. I've operated, owned and operated the five Subway Restaurants here in Paris for over 10 years. I've served on many boards, many leadership positions, including the Visitors and Convention Council Board. I've been Vice President of Membership, Vice President of Finance of Lamar County Chamber of Commerce and most recently Chairman of the Board of Lamar County Chamber of Commerce. And of course, I've served on North Lamar School Board for three years. I have many hours of continuing education training and this all leaves me with the knowledge of the problems and the current solutions to move North Lamar forward. I believe business experience is important. We look at multi-million dollar budgets, make huge fiscal decisions with a lot of taxpayer money. Revenue is tied to quantity of students, just like revenue in business is tied to quantity of what we sell. So I believe business experience is a very important part of being a board member. Thank you.
I have been a member of the North Lamar School Board for the past four years. I have served as Secretary of the Board for the last two years and like the other two candidates, I have also received training from TASB. Every year I've been on the board and have received over 25 hours each time and with this time, only receiving 21. Before my appointment to the school board, I was actively involved within the district. I have volunteered countless hours within the district where needed. I have served on many campus, district and Teacher of the Year committees. From the time my children were enrolled in North Lamar, I have been a part of every PTO at every campus, even serving as PTO President on many. I have been an active participant in the North Lamar Education Foundation Program. I also was a substitute teacher for a number of years and by substituting and volunteering within the schools, I saw firsthand a day in the life of a teacher and an educator. I believe that the knowledge that I have gained from volunteering within this district for so long has helped me to better understand the school environment and prepared me to continue to make a meaningful contribution as a member of this board. Furthermore, I believe that I have proven that I will make the difficult decisions necessary to move this district forward.
What makes me qualified? I've been involved at North Lamar with all my kids, activities, volunteer and coaching at all campuses. I have a business sense and I want to use it to improve North Lamar for the kids, the teachers and the staff and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, over the past few years, there's been a lot of talk about the conditions of various school buildings, including talk of closing some buildings and building new ones. What are your thoughts on the current conditions of the buildings on the North Lamar campus?
I haven't been in all of the buildings so I can't speak for all of them, but the ones I have been in are, I would say that they are, after the recent renovations, they are structurally sound and safe for our students and for our teachers. With the money that we've spent already on them, we're going to have to stay there in order for the money spent to be cost-effective, else it's just wasted. We've wasted enough money, but if we can maintain these buildings and eventually the time will be right, once we regain the trust of the members of Lamar County and the people that live in the district, when the time is right, I do believe another bond will be passed and we can move forward with the planning of building new buildings. Aaron Parker is a campus that I believe needs to remain open. It's the hub of that community and I believe it needs to stay right where it's at. Thank you.
As far as the current conditions of the buildings we have, I think they're better than the community understands. They were definitely some misleading information over the last year or two. Our current board does have things going in the right direction. I'm concerned that there's no plan in place already prior to spending. We've spent a considerable amount painting buildings. We just plan to do a considerable amount of upgradings to Bailey and I'm, you know, I see the need to upgrade and take care of what we have. I'm concerned that we don't have a plan in place prior to spending and that may be something they're working on already. As far as the bond, I think we went about it wrong the first two times. We should have given taxpayers a little bit more option there, but I think we're extremely, somewhere, not extremely, but several years down the line before we can even consider it and I think we need to finish up what we've started now just for the money we've already spent. We need to keep moving forward with the repairs. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say we have listened to the taxpayer, okay? We have updated these buildings, done the best we can with what we have. We do have a plan in place. First, I would like to say I believe this board has done a fantastic job in regard to maintenance and updates to our buildings and the board continues to look to implement and improve our facilities. Many more plans are in the works. We continue to have discussions in regards to improvement to our facilities moving forward. Again, we've done all this without any added burden to the taxpayers. We've listened. We are listening, okay? We will get all of the fourth graders into the main building at Bailey to start the next school year in a safe, clean, improved environment and we will be ready to start school. The taxpayers have spoken and we have listened. Thank you.
Over the past year, we've begun to maintain and update the facilities that we currently have. We've asked maintenance and administration to formulate a 10-year plan of upkeep and maintenance so we can put that into future budgets. We have two buildings that we know have serious foundation problems. It's important to note that both of those buildings have been deemed safe to occupy by a forensic engineer. Updates are currently underway, especially at Bailey where the fourth grade hall is being renovated. One may say that that's wasteful spending. I believe they're misinformed. Between a timeline of passing a bond, planning a bond, design, construction, you're looking at a minimum of five years before a student could go to school in a new building. So I don't think it's a waste of money to provide students and teachers with five years worth of decent working conditions and a decent place to go to school.
Safety of our students and staff is priority number one. It's no secret that over the past few years, the community has received conflicting information about the state of some of our buildings, namely Higgins Elementary and Bailey Intermediate. Reports prepared by Randy L. Cooper Consulting Engineers dated April the 30th, 2015 and March the 10th, 2017 describe typical distress conditions. The March 2017 report also noted that long-term use of the building involves inherent risks due to the distress conditions that could make the structure vulnerable to instability if exposed to a major storm event with extreme winds. The scope of the Cooper assessments did not include detailed, in-depth diagnostic tasks. Therefore, WGE, was retained to conduct a structural condition assessment of the facilities and make recommendations regarding the soundness of the building for continued use. The Phase 1 report reported that they believed that the buildings can be safely occupied. The Phase 2 report reported that based on the finding of our Phase 1 and 2 investigations, we believe the structural framing system at the building is safe for occupancy on an interim basis. Both studies show that both Higgins and Everett are in desperate need of repairs. Obviously, these repairs are not a permanent solution, but until North Lamar decides to have another bond election, renovations are underway or will begin shortly at almost every campus.
I have been in all the buildings and some of the buildings are currently under remodel to bring them up to city code and do need to keep moving forward with the remodels and continue the maintenance and upgrades. This will be taken care of by many construction companies that we've been using. We also need to take care of the taxpayers while we're doing these remodels and we're going to have to move forward with the maintenance and give them what they need to keep the buildings up to code. Thank you.
Well, I've been asked about the closing of some buildings and the hot button right now is Parker and I assure you that I'm not willing to do anything to Parker. I think it's running and thriving and it is like Judd said, the hub of Powderly. The current enrollment at Parker is 228 kids. There are 39 staff members out there. It's pre-K through 5 and I think Ms. Hughes does a great job at Parker and so to all the stuff I've received about me wanting on this board to close Parker, that's, just letting you know, that's not my intent. Also, my wife actually teaches at Bailey and so I'm in and out of that building quite a bit and I do appreciate the testing that was done by the board so we could get some true answers about how bad it really is. I also have read their report. They gave us three options and we went with option one and I do agree that we needed to get the kids, you know, back into the building for safety. I think the safety is another hot button and so I applaud them for doing what they can to fix some issues that we have out there so the kids could move back in the building.
Thank you. Several of you have touched on this, but we would like to expand on it. There have been some bond elections over the past couple of years and they have failed. Do you feel another bond election is needed and how would you approach it differently?
I think the reason that the bonds have failed is there was no unification of the board. In 2016, there was a bond committee and we presented a proposal to the bond, to the board. At that time, we were under the impression that they were on board with the direction we were going. I'm not for sure that they were, not saying they were wrong, right or indifferent, but I think it's going to take full unison of the board, not just a 7-0 vote in open session. I believe we're going to have to get people that are completely in agreement that this is the direction we need to go. I feel that eventually there's definitely going to have to be a bond. We can't continue, we can't fix everything that needs to be fixed out of fund balance or out of savings. We just can't, can't do it with the rate that we lost students. There's just not enough revenue. I think moving forward, if we do put another bond in the cycle, I think we need to give our taxpayers multiple issues to vote on, multiple options. That seems to be the way they wanted it the last time and didn't get it. And I do also want to remind everybody is it wasn't a landslide. It was about 54, 46. It was, you know, there was only 85 votes difference and over nearly 2,200 people voted the last time. It was only a difference of about 85 votes. Thank you.
Personally, I feel the taxpayers of North Lamar School District have spoken pretty clearly the last couple of years. I believe at this time, we have to continue to do a better job of maintaining what we already have and earn trust. I believe we currently are doing a great job of maintenance at this time and updating the buildings. We as a board 10 months ago requested and in January received the final copy of the structural condition assessment of Bailey Intermediate and Higgins Elementary that deemed the building structurally safe. But quite a bit of work needs to be done to those buildings and we've begun that work to get the building safe, clean and back where we can get the students back inside. I think that it's an issue that, I think it is an issue that as a board, if we go the route of a bond, we need to be, we need to be as transparent as possible, plan out in front of the public eye carefully and with as much input from the community as possible. But until this time, we have to gain the trust back. We have to take care of what we have. Thank you.
As I said before, we have two buildings that are in very bad shape. The forensic study shows that repairs are both too costly in relation to building a new building and repairs are not guaranteed to hold. Therefore, eventually new buildings will need to be constructed, but before we can do that, we have to solve the low staff morale which is already significantly better and stabilized. We have to regain the trust of our taxpayers and parents, which we're trying to do through maintaining the assets that we currently have. We've hired Dr. Adams who is a great and dynamic leader and a huge step in the right direction to begin this process. When the time comes to discuss a bond, we must engage the entire community. We must show preliminary plans, elevation drawings so people can see exactly what we're going to build. That's what was missing before. The taxpayer will support our kids and our teachers. They just want to understand and see for themselves exactly what they're going to be paying for. You must engage the taxpayer in the process.
Eventually, North Lamar will need to have another bond election, but right now is not the right time. We have a long way to go to gain the trust back from the community and I'm committed to gaining that trust back. The first thing I would do differently is show the community what they will be voting for and what their hard-earned money is going towards. Secondly, is provide propositions. Allow the community to decide what they want to support and what they don't. I heard the community loud and clear on this last bond where they don't want an all-or-nothing approach, they want choices. On the first bond, we originally had propositions, but that was later changed to one proposition, but not without opposition. In my opinion, this was a big mistake. I wholeheartedly believe that we as a board should have listened to our community instead of taking the recommendation of an outside architectural firm. I can assure the public that if and when a bond election does resurface for North Lamar and if I am still fortunate enough to be part of this board, that the community's input will be one of my top priorities.
I would have to be a part of the research into the needs of the students, the staff and the district before being able to decide if another bond vote is needed. Whatever is decided, it would need to be transparent into the district and to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Well, I know that there's been a lot of work done to some of these buildings, but I'm sure everybody in Lamar County is familiar with the house that has a foundation problem. And what we have done is we've gone in and fixed sheet rock and ceiling and stuff like that, but the initial problem is the foundation of the school. So yes, I believe eventually we will have to try to get a bond passed because at some point, you're going to start spending, I think you're already spending good money after bad. So I do think that we will have to bring that up. I don't think there's a, this may be a short-term solution to the problems that we, some of the problems we have, but long-term, there's more than just Bailey. There's more than Higgins. There's... There's, you've got a band department that is practicing, a band that's just one state. You've got 160 members that are practicing with their band instruments in the hallways and bathrooms at the high school because they don't have an adequate place to practice. You know, there's more than just two buildings that, that we need to be looking at. And I just, I think it's gonna be a challenge, but I also believe that you have to be honest with the public and show them the needs. And we have, now we have some proof of what's really going on with the buildings, and just, ultimately, the taxpayers will decide. But getting the facts out there to them, you know, I kinda look at it like this. Would I wanna live in Bailey? No. Would I wanna live in Higgins? I mean, you think about those kids are out there at the school more than they're at their home. So, that's what we need to think about, is what those kids are living in, what they're going to every day. You also have to have new, new facilities to, what drawing card do we have at North Lamar? New student come to North Lamar, make a trip around, or go across town and make a trip around the building, you know, we gotta have a drawing card. And right now, I don't think we have any real strong drawing cards. So, we really need to, have to get by with what we got right now, but I think eventually, that will have to come back up as a bond. Thank you.
One thing that was just about unanimous amongst candidates was the fact that we've got to gain the trust. We've got to get the trust back of the community that's, that will be voting us in. You can, you can only put so much lipstick on a pig, and we about smothered this one to death. The renovations that we made are necessary, but they won't last. They're temporary. The buildings are temporary. Another bond is a necessity, not, not next year, or this year, or two or three years from now, but down the road, when the time is right, when the trust is gained, and the community realizes what we need, as Randy said, that drawing card that's needed for North Lamar. I believe that the community will get behind North Lamar again, and the bond will be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll shift gears now, although that, a very important topic there and probably one of the most talked about issues of this campaign. Now, we'll move on to the next question. How do you feel about interactions between the school board members and teachers and/or parents? Do you feel board members should be more or less accessible?
For an experienced board member, this is a tough question because ultimately, the day-to-day operations and what's going on at the school belongs to Dr. Adams. And we need to step back off the campuses and let Dr. Adams run the day-to-day operations there. We're there to oversee the school and oversee the campuses, but we need to let Dr. Adams handle the day-to-day. We need to stay accessible to the people that elected us, the teachers, the taxpayers. We gotta be there for the students. But ultimately, it's up to Dr. Adams, and we've hired a good man to run that day-to-day show, and I believe he'll do a fantastic job. But I believe as board members, we gotta turn it over to him and back off. Thank you.
Well, first, there is a proper process and procedure that one should follow. Complaints or comments should go through the proper chain of command. Having said that, I'm an elected official. The voters elected me to represent them. Because of that, I'll always have an open-door policy. I'll always be accessible to all the voters, and that includes the teachers and staff.
My answer to this question is both. Anyone that truly knows me knows that I am passionate about keeping an open line of communication between the teacher and a board member. After volunteering within the school district for numerous years, I feel that having a relationship with the teachers and the parents is vital to the success of a district. Teachers and faculty need to know that I appreciate them and the job that they do. Teachers, staff, and parents should be able to have an open and honest conversation within reason with a school board member. They should be able to ask questions to a board member, and a board member should be able to answer those questions or direct the teachers, staff, or parents to the superintendent if need be. I don't ever want a teacher or a parent to think that they cannot come to me for any reason, just because I'm a board member. But I also feel that when it comes to complaints and grievances, that there is a proper chain of command that must be followed. Parents, teachers, and staff cannot come straight to a board member and expect them to fix their problems. Teachers and parents must understand that a board member's job is not to manage the district. That is the job of the superintendent.
I think it is important for the board members to stay in touch with the staff and the parents and the taxpayers, and because, be accessible to hear the questions and views they have. And I believe that they need to listen and help and see what we can take care of. Thank you.
Well, I think it, as a board member, you have to be open to teachers and, and parents, and always be open to, to conversation with them. Where the buck stop is with the superintendent, though. I'm there to support the superintendent on his decisions. I'm not there to micromanage him, and I have a job, and he has a job. That's why we hire him for. And I'm there to support him, and I think sometimes whenever you, I think the reason this might have come up is, is because you probably have had some, some teachers go directly to board members and some decisions be, try to be made. But I think that's where you get into a problem. There has to be a chain of command. I worked for a school system for 18 years, so there has to be a chain of command, or you start getting into, he said, she said, we said, and that just doesn't work. So, the school board is there to support and back the decision that superintendent makes. But I'm also open to any and all conversation with, with any teacher or parent.
This is one of the easier questions because, as Jeff said, there's, there's school board policy that regulates that. You can't allow a school board member to make decisions pertaining to something that Dr. Adams should be handling and does handle. If you do, you're undermining that teacher's authority, and that's not doing anybody any favors. There is a chain of command that everybody should follow. If a parent has a problem in the classroom, then they should take it up with the teacher. If the teacher can't handle it, then they move to the principal. If the principal can't handle it, then they move to the superintendent. The board should be the last step, not the first. I've seen each of the board members at games and different activities, and I'm sure you could approach any of them and talk to them, and they'd all be happy to listen to your problems, but keep in mind, there's only so much that a board member can do. Thank you.
I believe as a board member, you're only a board member once a month at the meeting. Outside of that meeting, I think you have to represent, you still have to represent the district through your teachers and parents and be willing to listen. Give them guidance as far as that chain of command. You know, if, if parents or teachers have a problem, they need to go to the principal or the teacher or the counselor, and then if they don't have any success there, move forward to the assistant superintendent or the superintendent and stay in that chain of command. For the superintendent that we just hired to be successful, that chain of command has got to be stiffened up, let's say. We've gotten out of that chain of command, and I don't think mal-intent was involved. But when other teachers see things going on, they don't know from one moment to the next whether that person is representing the school as a parent, a board member, or what. I think it's all about guidance with issues with parents and teachers and, you know, just leading them in the right direction. As a board member, about the chain of command, you need to see your principal or the counselor and let them handle this. And if you don't have any success with that, then come back to me, and we'll address this issue together. Thank you.
Thank you again, candidates. Now, this question, a very hot-button issue politically nationwide. Due to recent events, concern for the safety of students has been pushed to the forefront. How do you feel about North Lamar's current safety and security procedures, and would you change them? If so, how?
Well, I wanna start by saying that we have a fantastic district police department. Those guys do a great job. North Lamar has a lot of older buildings, as we've said before, some built in the 60s. They were built at a time where we didn't have to worry about someone coming to school and shooting kids. Many of those buildings were built in a way that's, it's very challenging to maintain the safety. I mean, we're currently looking at all options to increase security for all the kids. The security of the kids is obviously number-one priority, not just for myself, but every staff member and every one of these guys up here. On April 30th, we'll be having a public meeting to discuss the possibility of arming certain staff members. I'm just gonna go ahead and step out there and say that I'm, I'm in support of that as long as there's a process to both qualify and see that whoever those people may be have yearly tactical training, if they're doing that. I'll quickly say, the returning fourth graders will be going back to the main building next year. That alleviates a lot of safety concerns with portable buildings and how tough it was with them being outside of the main building to maintain safety there. So, we're excited about that.
Again, safety of our staff and students is priority number one. I believe that North Lamar does an excellent job at keeping our students and staff safe. This past year, we have established our own police department, which I'm excited about. More and more districts are creating their own departments. We were able to add a fourth resource officer which is stationed out at Aaron Parker. We, the school board, are in the process of talking about adding more security to our campuses to better protect our staff and students. A public hearing will be held on April 30th concerning safety at North Lamar, and I encourage all stakeholders to attend this public hearing.
I am in favor of arming staff. Security should be a very high priority of the board in light of the recent violence in schools. Improving insecurity in all campuses is already evident, and I would want to equip Chief Bowes and his officers with the technology and the funds to keep our students and staff safe. Thank you.
This is a monumental concern for me. I certainly feel this is an area we should address in taking action on constantly. It is past time to have our staff and students more protected from potential harm. We have a great North Lamar Police Department that are always willing to learn the newest discoveries in safety issues, and I appreciate their diligence. Safety is the number-one priority for me. You can open the paper daily and see shootings that are going on, and I don't think we can move fast enough to, to get our, our schools upgraded in safety. And the technology is so great right now with cameras and, and locking people out, and I have visited with a school across town, and they just recently upgraded their, their camera systems, and, and they described it to me, and it's, it's unbelievable. And why should we, at North Lamar, you know, have anything else but the best? I think we're losing time on that as of today. I think tomorrow, we need to start on that. Thank you.
Safety in our schools and for our students and our staff should be second to none. It should be our number-one goal. It's sad that we live in a world today that requires that, but that's, that's what we're in, this position we've gotten ourselves into. But the, I agree with Randy, we can't move fast enough, do whatever we, whatever it takes to, to better our schools and to better our safety. They've done an excellent job with the police department that we have. There's a lot more that can be done, just some minor things. City of Paris, they could drive through our campus. I mean, they have officers out patrolling all day, every day. Why couldn't they just drive through just to be seen? Why couldn't we partner with them? Anything, I mean, just to drive through the campus. I mean, what would that take? It may, it may not prevent anything. It may prevent a lot. But new buildings will be much safer. We'll have more students combined into larger buildings, easier to lock down, easier to maintain. Thank you.
My personal opinion, this is an area we can't spend too much money. In the ever-changing world we live with, or live in, it's constantly something new, some new way to affect our children, our staff. I commend the board. They've started the process in having an open meeting for people to give their concerns. I believe we're kinda behind the eight ball here. Luckily for us, we can draw on what other districts and cities have done, what hasn't worked, what has worked. I am for arming staff members under certain guidelines. You know, I'd like to see us reach out to other districts and see, you know, what's been successful on that front. One of the things I would like to see, because of our district is all there together and so many roads leading in and out, I've, I've mentioned this in the past, I believe we've got to, in some form or fashion, slow the traffic down on our campus, some form. We've got to limit access to anybody and everybody. As it is right now, you can drive to the front door of any campus. I just believe we, we need to look into that as far as how people come and go from our campus, not just our buildings.
I believe safety is one of the most important issues we face in the district at this time. As a district and a board, as a district and a board, we are currently working diligently on this issue as we speak. We have been and continue to study and look into what are the best options that fit well within our district. We currently have a workshop scheduled for April 30th in the North Lamar High School Auditorium to seek input from the public and to share the information that we have gathered to try and make the best informed safety decisions for our district. There's a lot of innovations out there. There's a lot of things that we have been taking a look at. But one thing to remember, we've got to continue to unify as a board. We can't lose 200 students and the funding that goes with that to be able to afford these things. If we wanna be better in safety, as we wanna be better in everything at North Lamar, we need to unify as one district a lot better. We need to keep our students, keep the funding, so we can afford to do these things. Thank you.
Thank you, and as a parent, thank you all for those very thoughtful answers. We now move to the end of our program. Each of you will have two minutes for closing statements, beginning with Ms. Trammell.
Again, I wanna say thank you to my parents, Texas, for this informational discussion. I did not grow up in Paris, nor did I attend North Lamar as a student. I do not have any family that has been here in Paris or that attended North Lamar for generations. I don't have a spouse or a family member that is employed by the district, and I don't own my own business. I believe if you're a board member, you should not be able to receive monies from the district you serve. I believe it is a conflict of interest as a taxpayer. Therefore, I think it is safe to say that I am not banking on my family ties to pull me through this election. I am not a hometown girl, but I can assure you that when we moved to Paris in 2005 and I enrolled my children into North Lamar, because in my opinion, it was the best district in Paris, that I became a North Lamar Panther. Hometown girl or not, I believe blue and gold. I love this district, the faculty we employ, the students we teach, and I want the best for North Lamar. That is why I would greatly appreciate your vote for school board, so that I may continue serving our students and our district. Just look at where we are now versus where we have been. Look around the district, and you will see a totally different atmosphere. You will, you will most importantly- You will, you will most importantly see smiling faces, but also a lot of upgrades to our facilities. You will see a district that is regaining its momentum and heading back to the top. I am dedicated to making our school the best it can be. I strongly feel that the current board is on the right path and making and having made much-needed changes and improvements for the betterment of our students. As a result of these changes, we have been, we have seen significant improvement in the overall atmosphere at North Lamar. Staff morale has dramatically improved throughout the district. Renovations are being made district-wide, including but not limited to major renovations at Bailey Intermediate, so that our students can move out of the portable buildings and back into the main building, beginning with the 2018, 2019 school year. I do not have a sole focus on single issues, rather I am interested in the overall success of all students in our district. My focus is the 2,520 students that are enrolled at North Lamar ISD. Keeping the students at the forefront in every decision I make is my top priority. I am committed to advocating for North Lamar teachers and staff to ensure they are supported and I am committed to regaining the trust of our community. I want all students to have the best education possible. I want to ensure that our students have the best teachers available to them and that the teachers and staff have the resources they need to do their jobs effectively. I am extremely proud to be a part of the North Lamar School Board. We have made tremendous strides in a short amount of time and given the opportunity, I strongly believe that this board and I will continue to move this district forward in a positive direction. I hope you will consider me, Kristi Trammell, when you cast your vote. Thank you.
In closing, these are some of my views to improve the district and make North Lamar educational and financially successful again. I am proud to be a lifelong Panther and want to help the board and the superintendent succeed. Thank you very much.
North Lamar School District covers 428 square miles. That's a big school district. This is a big responsibility. So being part of the board will be an opportunity to serve and give back to the community and the district in which we are invested. I hope to earn a place on the board to work with the school and community to encourage growth of our programs while pursuing, pursuing new ones. Find continued solutions for building and safety and promote the best educational environment to North Lamar students and staff. I'm very excited to have Dr. Adams as North, at North Lamar and have enjoyed getting to know he and his family. I believe more great things are on the horizon for our school district and I would appreciate your vote. I'm Randy Stevens.
Because my wife is employed at North Lamar, we prayed long and hard about my decision to run for board. Come to the conclusion that that's, that's what I should do at this time and so I chose to run. To be completely honest with you, I'd rather be anywhere than right here right now, but that's what I signed up for. That's what I committed to and I'm committed 100%. Thank you.
When packets first started being picked up, I mulled this over with family, friends, some teachers about the state of the district. I, I, I agree with everybody when they say we need to unify. At the time, we had two board members who ran unopposed in 2015 and one that was appointed. One of my main goals in even picking up a packet and turning it in was make sure nobody ran unopposed. Come June, we'll have a elected board. All seven members will have been elected by the people and I believe we have to honor the people's wishes. I believe they spoke the last two years loud and clear about what they wanted and maybe they weren't given enough choices as far as the bond. Win, lose or draw, I think we all have to unify, no matter who wins, we have to unify somehow, some way and all come together. Come June, we'll have seven elected board members. We need to get behind them, whether you agree with them or not. Like I stated, we need to become more comfortable with agreeing to disagree. You have to respect other people's opinion. These seven people stuck their neck out and put their name in the hat. If they win, I believe we have to honor that. With that being said, I'm 100% committed. I would really appreciate your vote. Appreciate your vote. My name is Brian Ring. Thank you.
Finally tonight, I would like to thank everyone for watching and listening to each candidate. Our children and our school district appreciate it. After May 5th, three people that are sitting here tonight will join the other four members to continue to lead this district forward. I can only speak for myself for the last 10 and a half months, but haven't things been better for the children, for the teachers, and hasn't the board done a great job taking care of our taxpayers? Yes, we've spent, we've spent a lot of money repairing buildings that needed much-needed improvements to our facilities. We listened to our taxpayers. That's what they asked us to do. We've hired a great new superintendent, Dr. Jason Adams, who I think everyone can and will get behind. He's a fanat, fantastic leader that's going to take our district to new and better places. North Lamar ISD is moving forward positively in an upward manner. I believe students are excited, teachers are happy, I believe taxpayers are happy. We've managed to do all these repairs without any extra burden on the taxpayer. In my humble opinion, as everyone here has agreed, we just need to keep moving forward. Don't you think we should keep moving forward with the group that got this moving forward the last 10 and a half months? My name is Ricky Richardson and I would appreciate your vote this week during early voting and especially on Election Day, May 5th. Go Panthers!
I believe I have the business experience and leadership qualities to lead North Lamar in a positive direction. I've demonstrated that I know firsthand the value of a great teacher and the impact they can have on a child. The only agenda I have is 2,500-plus kids. That's all. I want each one of them to have the opportunity to be successful. Some of my opponents concern me with what their agenda may be. Some of them were the very ones obstructing the board as we tried to make the necessary There were tough decisions. Now it concerns me that they come to run for school board. It's my hope that their heart is good because a lot of little kids depend on it. These candidates suddenly support the progress we're making. That's a good thing. As some of the guys said, we all need to unify. Everyone loves progress, but no one likes the process of change. It's been a tough time. It's been a tough time to be a board member. This board has North Lamar headed in the right direction. Positive things are happening at North Lamar. Positive things are happening for kids at North Lamar. I'd like to ask the voters for their support. I'd ask, I'd like to ask the voters for their, their vote because I, I would like to return to the board and finish the job and the good things that we have that, that are going on. I'd like to thank all of you for this opportunity. Thank you for these other candidates and thank you for supporting Jeff Martin for school board.
Thank you, candidates. Once again, we want to thank everybody for tuning in, whether it be on myparistexas.com, myparistexasTV25 or on Facebook Live for the Meet the Candidates forum. We want to thank our sponsors, Ballard Insurance Agency, Dillon's Drivers, Dolan's Bell Bonds and Buck Dandy Trailers. Very important, don't forget, early voting started today and will continue through Tuesday, May 1st. Those in the North Lamar School District can vote at the North Lamar Administration Building from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The polls will be closed Saturday and Sunday, April 28th and 29th. Election Day voting is at the Lamar County Services Building at 231 Lamar Avenue or the Powderly Volunteer Fire Department Saturday, May 5th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Candidates, thank you so much for taking time out of a busy campaign to join us tonight. We really appreciate it. Your answers were thoughtful. I don't think this could have gone better personally. And of course, once again, thank you for everybody for tuning in. I've been your moderator, Chad Lindsey. Thank you and good night.